Good evening everyone and welcome to Township of Owich, we made the whole meeting on August 1st. We're now live on YouTube. Thanks to your agents for a few minutes delay getting started today. It's our first meeting about COVID protocols and technology is about like they are duty tonight. But thanks to staff for their hard work getting us back in business. So it's great to see a full gallery here tonight. I'm going to talk some chambers. And I'll do the roll call, councillor, of council. Hi councillor Schmuck, present and sharing the meeting tonight, Mayor Shans.
Present.
Councillor Bryant.
Present.
Councillor Burgess.
Present.
Councillor Pidale.
Present.
And councillor Grant.
Present.
Thanks. And now to the land that's all of it, once acknowledged, land in which we live has been here from time immemorial. Indigenous people have lived here since time immemorial. I thank Snowton, also called the Atawam, the Run, the Adah, Isht, and Olave, and the Hoden, or Shani people. Who've lived here in care of this land may continue to share and carry the land with us. Every together, learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna, and the land sustains us. On our council, if there's any declarations of your area interest. Being none, we can move on to the public meeting tonight. The following portion of this meeting is for information only, no decisions will be made tonight. Any questions can be directed to the Health and Services staff following the meeting. They clear the planning public meeting to be open and ask senior planners. Stephen Dykstra to provide councils' overview of the information for regarding home hardware storage.
Well, good evening, hopefully everyone at home and abroad can hear us through this microphone. My name is Stephen Dykstra, I'm the senior planner here at Township of Owich. And tonight I'll be speaking very briefly about a application that made by Home Hardware Store Limited, which is located at thirty-four Henry Street in St. Jacobs. They are proposing a parking lot expansion to their current facility. Currently, it is a thirty-four hectare property and it is designated as industrial. And the property is, property portion that we're speaking about is currently zoned agriculture and as well as industrial M1 with site-specific provisions, section twenty-six, one, two, three. The applicant is proposing to rezone approximately seven hectares, which is about twenty acres of agriculturally zoned lands. The lands are proposed to be rezoned to general industrial to facilitate the expansion of the home hardware, transport, trailer, parking and storage within a portion of the industrial land area that was recently added as part of the official plan update. The applicant has provided a number of studies to support their application. And that's about it. And any other questions, I'll be happy to answer. And yeah, I think that the applicant might be speaking very briefly on this application as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dykstra. Any questions from staff before, sorry, any questions from staff before the applicant speaks tonight? Not seeing any. Okay, at this point I'll ask Mr. Patterson to come forward please to present the council this evening. Okay, to begin when you're ready.
Just waiting for the PowerPoint to school up. So, good evening, council, again, my name is Scott Patterson with Patterson Planting Consultants. Pleased to be here this evening on behalf of Home Hardware Stores Limited. Next slide please. And we're discussing thirty-four Henry Street, which is the Home Hardware Store set office and main distribution facility. As noted, the subject lands were previously added to the St. Jacob settlement boundary through the township and regional rationalization process. As a result, an official plan amendment is not required. A zoning amendment is required to rezone seven hectares of the land to general industrial M1. And the site will be used for outdoor storage and trailer and truck parking. Next please. So the lands outlined in red constitute the thirty-four Henry Street address owned by Home Hardware Stores Limited. And the area of the zoning amendment is outlined in blue. Next please. So as I've noted, the lands were brought into the rationalization process previously done and they are currently designated as industrial. And they're also subject to the home hardware north policy area. Next slide please. So the north policy area for these lands basically has two components. The first policy being that these lands have to be used by home hardware. They can't be severed, they can't be developed for anyone else's use. And they will be an extension of the existing home hardware facility. The second policy on the screen, item B, basically speaks at the time when we come forward for zoning by law amendment, the various items that we need to provide to the township. Those speak to land use compatibility regarding noise, environmental protection, transportation impacts, etc. Next slide please. So this is the site plan that was submitted with the actual application. It's a very boring site, kind of, the ones I normally deal with because it's basically just a gravel parking lot and the extension of their storage and trailer parking area. So again, it's the area outlined in blue and it's seven hectares in size. Next slide please. And this just represents the zoning that we're proposing for the lands. So the existing home hardware facility is zoned M1. With your existing trailer and parking storage areas, it's owned as M1 as well, with various holding provisions basically saying that they can't be developed with buildings until servicing is available. We're proposing an M1 zoning for the expansion area. And it was suggested as part of my application to the township that a holding provision may be placed on those lands as well. Basically freezing them just for transport, truck parking until such time as a building may be contemplated in the future, but the holding provision would basically lock it into that land use. Next slide please. So as noted, there was a variety of supporting materials that we submitted in support of the application. These were provided as per policy B, on site-specific policy. So this is a list of what we submitted, including a noise study, traffic impact study, archaeological study, environmental impact study to look at the woodlot on site. And all of those items are currently be reviewed by township staff. Next slide please. In summary, it's my opinion that the proposal confirms the provincial policy statement, confirms the growth plan, confirms the regional official plan and implements the township of Owich official plan. As noted, the various studies we submitted support the proposal. And site plan approval will be required going forward. That concludes my presentation, if there was any questions for me, I'll be answering them.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor.
Thank you, Chair, through you. It's just a quick question, in the list of items that you had listed there, you had the noise study, is some of the residents have voiced concerns over the potential addition of things like lighting and maybe the impact of dust, should this be rezoned? So could you speak to whether or not you would be examining any impacts of increased lighting on residents that may live in close proximity, is that something that you would be doing as part of an emergency diligence when you're doing some of the noise study?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So yes, as part of the application that we submitted, as part of the planning opinion report, we did speak to noise and dust and odor specifically. So home hardware does have a plan for dust as part of their gravel parking lots. They do apply calcium, they do apply water and things like that when dust does occur. They do that on an as-needed basis. There is no odor really from the facility. And there is a plan for them to start using electric shunt vehicles rather than the current gas and diesel operated vehicles to reduce their emissions and help limit noise as well. And then there was a noise study done as part of the submission. It's hard to see on the site plan that I provided, but there is an existing berm along the east side of the property, so it'd be rezoned. That existing berm is meant to control noise from the property. We're not proposing any changes to that berm, it's remaining in place. And the noise consultant found that with that berm in place, the noise level limits would be within ministry guideline regulation. So yes, there was those submission requirements, I know staff are certainly reviewing those. And if anything comes through from staff review, there was peer review comments that were provided back to our noise consultant. So all of those matters are being addressed and before we come back to council, I'm sure we'll have a better position or better standing and make sure that all those items have been looked at in detail.
Through the chair, further to that, we will be recommending a, through the site plan application process as well, additional studies can be required or requested. And one of them being potentially a photometric plan as well. And that could assist with the lighting and that would be primarily for the the proposed use, which would just be the trucking portion of it as opposed to the existing building that's currently there. Which I don't believe that we would be requiring them to do a photometric plan necessarily for the existing building.
Sorry, just to follow up on that, I didn't address lighting and your deck was a hundred percent correct, we would be submitting a lighting plan in support of that, that expansion area, if lighting is proposed. Today, I'm not sure if home hardware is actually proposing lighting in that area for safety and security and things like that and just their hours of operation, I suspect it would be. But through a site plan application, we would be doing, for sure.
Any other questions, Phil? Councillor Burgess.
Through you, Chair. You mentioned there is a berm on the east side there, would you guys be considering a solid fence or a tree line or anything else in the other areas around there just for more separation and control of the noise and dust a lot?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair. Anything's on the table, currently the noise study does not suggest that we need to do anything further beyond burn. But naturally, I'd like to speak for home hardware that they want to be a big corporate citizen, so if there is something we need to do and that's identified through the process, then I'm sure home hardware would consider it. At the present time, there is no further consideration for additional fencing or additional items like that considering what's there today. But if through the peer review and through the assessment of the studies, if something comes up, by all means, we'll definitely.
Oh, and just one other, I'm always liable to staff. There is this school right near there, are there any extra considerations that need to be taken with that?
Through the chair, as mentioned by the consultant, they are doing all the studies, all of those noise and dust and lighting studies will be, they go to the most sensitive use. So residential is the most sensitive use and there is a residential area indirect that's directly adjacent, so any of the adjacent sensitive uses are always considered in proximity to the proposed, into the proposed use. So yes, when they do these studies, they always go to the most sensitive uses that are in close proximity.
Any other questions? Councillor.
Sorry, thanks, thanks through you, through the consulting. I'm looking at your slides, I'm trying to get the number, the slide number here, slide seven. We're speaking about part three and the rezoning of that to M1. I see there's also a part four there that I presume is empty land right now, do you know that if there's any plans on future development for that, are we going to be back here in, you know, three years' time looking to rezone part four potentially?
Through you, Mr. Chair, is it possible to bring in our home, or an airport? And I apologize, I meant to identify this as part of, can you go back to, to scan back through the slide? It's very, that one right there would work. The area of part four is at the top of the screen, so to the north, there is being rezoned. That currently contains the stormwater management facilities for home hardware for the entire facility. There is no plan that I'm aware of to modify or remove or do any modifications of that area. It's a very large stormwater management facility, given that the overall site is over a hundred acres. So I can't foresee that those lands would be developed anytime in the future. That's an essential infrastructure component to the project and it simply won't be removed.
Thank you.
Sorry, through the chair, further to that, that's also true with the urban boundary ends at that location. So there would have to be a further official plan amendment, there'd have to be, the extension of the boundary would have to be extended in order to include that area, so it would have to go through a much larger process than just going through and through a rezoning application in order for those lands to be included.
Not seeing any other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much.
You.
Next, we have our participant, Julie Shark. Speak to us, Miss Shark, I asked you to turn your video back to phone on please. Perfect, we can see you now. And if you'd like to begin your presentation, we'd love to hear from you.
Sure, okay, so I'm, I'm not an expert in any of the environmental policies or anything, I'm just, I'm just a neighbor that lives about a, let's say a block away, I'm on King Street, right at Henry, so I'm really close to home hardware. And my concern basically is just with the climate crisis and biodiversity crisis. And I'm not sure when all of these regulations for rezoning from like into an industrial zone have been made and whether kind of aren't the updated science of the climate crisis is being considered. But this is a time when, like, the region of Waterloo has some climate action plans and they're trying to reduce the greenhouse emissions by eighty percent. And part of their plans are including removing parking lots and we're talking about paving over a great big field, which is going to cause like runoff and the urban heat island effect. And it just seems counterproductive to what they're trying to do as a region as a whole to reduce all of our impact. And I think depending on when all of these regulations were written, just doing, just following the regulations to kind of like the bare minimum is no longer a responsible thing to do for, you know, our climate as a whole. And I think that this is a case where we need to look about going above and beyond just planting a few trees in the parking lot or making sure that a couple of trees aren't mowed over is just not really good enough compared to where we're at and what we're up against in the next few years. Having all of that concrete is going to increase the temperature. And there's going to be soil runoff and erosion directly into the river, there is wildlife habitat and it's just, there's a lot more at stake right now than just having some extra parking lots for some trucks. So my concern is entirely environmental, not even taking into consideration the amount of noise and dust and light pollution that this is inevitably going to be causing for the neighborhood. But I just think that we should be looking at making sure that we're being held to the highest standard possible when we're making an irreparable damage to the environment, because there's no way that we can't all agree that paving over this piece of land so close to a river is not going to irreparably affect the environment.
Okay, thank you, council, and ask any questions? For my shirt. Not seeing any at this point, so thank you very much. At this point, for example, are there any other participants in the public meeting?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, there are no unregistered participants this evening.
Okay, so do you know further speakers, I think there was, or some public meeting?
Sorry, can I just ask staff one point of clarification? Based on what we heard from participants, do we know whether or not this proposed change would lead to an asphalt parking lot, is it going to be gravel? Do we have an idea of what would be going in for the trucks to park on?
I believe it's, through the chair, sorry. I believe it's considered a hard surface at this point. I don't know specifically if it's going to be gravel or asphalt. And then also too through the site plan, we'll be determining whether there, what kind of vegetation could potentially be added to this as well to potentially alleviate a little bit or mitigate the the large area of hard surface. But again, that will be determined through the site plan process as to those sort of details. But at this point, it is, the proposal is for a parking, the zone is for parking. Again, the exact details of how that comes about will be dealt with through the, through the site plan application.
Any other questions at this point? Okay. Then we'll move on from public meeting, question of the meeting, from the presentation. Section, based on our new church street comparison update. We have Jennifer Rose and Boris Kalovik, your region, there's an update on construction and events are happening there as well, please leave a sign.
Thank you, and I'll thank you, Chair Schmidt, and good evening to everyone today. Thank you for welcoming us to your meeting, we're pleased to to talk about the Church Street reconstruction project, so my name is Jennifer Rose, I work for the region of Waterloo and the commissioner of engineering and environmental services. And with me is Boris Bakovic, and he is the senior engineer in charge of the project on Church Street. So he will be able to answer the more technical questions, but I'm just going to give an overview of the project and we're pleased to answer any questions you might have. So if we could get the map projected, that would be very helpful for us. So the Church Street reconstruction is showing on this map, as you know, phase one of the project was, is the purple and orange area there that goes from Arthur to the inside to our east. And now we're working on the blue area, which crosses the river all the way down to the end of the green. And this project is reconstruction of a road, a widening sidewalk, standing place, plenty sanitary, water main and storm source. The, the blue area, the box, that is where we discovered an old road. So roads in the nineteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds were built out of this substance called tarmacadon. And I'm not sure about the emphasis on the right area there. But this is actually a historical fact, we just found out, that's where where tarmac comes from, is tarmacadon. And I'm sure you've heard that before, any hard services sometimes refer to that. So it's not unusual actually for us to find this, this type of road underneath, other roads as we're doing our construction projects, because this is a widely used substance in Ontario at least back in the early nineteen hundreds. So as part of our project, we need to follow the excess soil regulation. And this is a regulation that came into effect this year. And the purpose of the regulation is to move soils that have contaminants in it to a spot where they're not going to adversely affect the environment. And there's another purpose to it, not to keep soils out of landfills, because our landfill in Ontario are about ten years capacity right now, so we needed to address two different things. So following the soil regulation, Boris, with the consultant, did, called in a qualified person and we've got one online here, if you've got any technical questions for that person, to come and do some samples of the soil and to figure out where it needs to go. So we went through that process, we got the soil, take it into where it needs to go, we followed the excess soil regulation and the report for that is on the excess soil website, if anyone's interested in that. The qualified person did look, look for, is it chlorobenzene, which is related to the Laxus site in the soils, in the bore holes, you see the blue, black dots there, and did not find any in the soil samples. The NDMA, which is the other contaminant concern for Laxus, was also not found in the soil. So, and that's because it's usually found in water, but you can't find it in soil. So we have reports from another consultant show actually that those two contaminants are south, I guess, south of the Laxus site. They were not found in the, in the roadway and the spoils that are there. And I know that that was something that you were interested in and concerned in. So our qualified person determined that the contaminants that they did find were related to the tarmacadon or that was suspected. Any questions, Boris is here to answer more technical questions and our qualified person and Boris can answer the questions.
Okay, question was from council.
So when you tested the soil that was removed, so how is that done?
I'm testing the soil as well, so you take a bore hole and then you go down and take the sample, right, then you take it to a lab and they do all their tests that they do for various different soils and then various different chemical parameters. Right, and then whatever they get out of that, is it compared to certain numbers, the chemical parameters for all of the water in the direction to you for that?
And then you separated the soil of contaminated soil and uncontaminated soil, right?
We on site?
Yes.
Yeah, so what we get is we get the results, right, and then our QP will tell us, okay, from here to here, you got, you know, it's type one, it's type two, so forth, right? And then what we do, we tell the contractor, okay, from here to here, this is your least stable two point one, you can use it on another site. From here to here, you know, exceeds two point one, but meets three point one, you, you can use it on another site or you can take it to land, right? And from here to here, it exceeds two point one, all this stuff kind of will end. Right, so would we judge it, we judge it by depth as well as by width from here to here?
So once, once you've done the bore holes, is there, is there testing done again after that? Like, I think as you deliver the soil, is it tested or like, was there another test done or just the bore holes?
So there's the bore holes, right? Usually the way we do this, we separate the bore holes out, either fifty meters or a hundred meters, right? But then on this particular project, once we find out an area that is actually what we say contaminated, but that just means that, hey, it exceeds certain table and it cannot be used in any other site. It doesn't mean it's hazardous, it doesn't mean it's going to, it's just according to certain regulations, it should contaminate, can I reuse it on a site? Right, what we did is because, as you can imagine, that's, it's getting more expensive as it gets worse, it gets more expensive, we have to take the land, right? So what we do is we do additional testing to start tightening up the area that we actually have to dig up and take to land. Right, so that's, that's what we did. Does that answer a question?
Yeah, I think so, um, how, how long an area, area was it a part of?
The one that we had to take out, it was about two hundred meters.
Just follow that to what that, I guess, all of that?
With depth, it was basically below one point one meters. So anything, anything up to, I think with point seven eight was okay, and then below point seven eight, we're metered down to about one point one, or point two was, was the area that we had to take out.
Sorry, for eighteen inches? Okay, okay. I'm trying to print it correctly.
I know, these inches, meters. You should hear conversations on sites.
Councillor. Thank you, Chair, through you, to the presenters. You had mentioned that there are new standards that just came in this year or last year. So if this had have been discovered, say, two years ago, what would have happened with this site?
Again, so the, the Ontario regulation four oh six, the soil regulation, right? That came into effect in twenty twenty, but it's not officially until this year, right? So the region of Waterloo has actually been following these standards since twenty twenty, since they came out. Right, so even if you said two years ago, if we still would have followed this exact same thing, right? Not only Spalters did that and several developers do that, they still don't do that. And then, and the regulation is one of the key reasons why it came on, because developers, because they took stuff off and pumped it anywhere, right? So we would have done the exact same thing, region of Waterloo would have done. If this went, let's say, ten years ago, right, where the soil regulation is, the four oh six didn't exist, right? Then the parameters would have been tested against different other regulations, right? And we would have acted according to those regulations, right?
Can I have a follow-up? Because this is just two hundred meters or whatever you had said, I mean, presumably this road goes on for much longer than I mean, presumably this road goes on for much longer than that, or should we be worried that there might be some presence of this further down the road?
So I, I, I want to clarify, in the area that we showed the blue, the blue portion, right? I think for a reason why we called here was because the public is, or the council is concerned that it's contamination to Laxus. Right, so we can, we can say that there's no contamination in our soil due to Laxus. The contamination that we found in the soil or the tarmacadon that we found the asphalt layer, that's nothing really crazy new that we don't have on any other sites. And that we didn't have last year on the first portion as well. Right, it's just your regular hydrocarbons to fuel and petroleum and other things that just gets into, into the soil, that, that is not fit for another site. When I say another site, a lot of times we, we can, we can take some of the floating farm, right, a farmer's need soil all the time for various different things, right? If the soil is clean, we take it to their site, right? And then, and then the levels will, go like that, right? So it's not something that, that probably needs to be concerned about, because this is not something extraordinary for us. We do this all the time, right, you know, like it because it costs a little bit of money, but this, the things that we found in the soil, is not something that's out of your ordinary.
I think to add to that too, if you, the map, the square box is where the tarmacadon was, was found. So it wasn't found outside of the boxed area.
Nor was it found last year, in the, all the whole section between, that you see the orange and the purple, between Arthur and Riverside. There was no tarmacadon, and I'm hoping not to find any more.
Open that, why would it be a three meter section versus the entire roadway?
Yeah, that's.
All of Church and or for example?
I might be able to answer that, there is a house there. Um, that they, it used to face that direction, and so, um, and, and I don't know for sure, but it's, it's possible that it is related to, to where that house is. It's an eighteen sixties house.
So exactly.
Maybe. I don't know, but a thought.
Theory that we have, as, as people in construction, I think as the road was being built up, built up, and certain sections were being replaced, I think the project of work at its time was just taking out whatever is needed. And somebody at some point decided, hey, we need to, you know, meet this grade or this grade, and we just, we just put new gravel up and pave over it. We just do that, we don't do this anymore, by the way, we kick the roads out, but that's, I think what happened.
I have two other questions then, have we found this in any other parts from Lire in the last three, four years?
No, no, we, we don't have information having found on there. Uh, we have found somewhere else, uh, outside of regions, but not on there at all.
And does it migrate at all through the soil?
No, not the asphalt, no.
Can that help, Ms. Charles?
I have another question, not really related to this project, but not related to the soil, so.
All right, thank you.
And since you're here, and I've, I've asked you this before, Jennifer, but can you speak to how long the bridge will be closed?
Yeah, so the hope is definitely to get it open before school. I know that that question came through, right, so the hope is definitely to have it open before school. So we're in stage one B right now, where we're closed from Duke, uh, just east of the bridge, right? So at the beginning of September, we want to have that open. And then from there on out, we're going to have one lane open at the bridge, so people will be able to pass that important.
Begin with one lane.
Yeah, I, I really, we understand the importance, so I'm pushing.
Okay, and, and while I've got you here, can I ask a question? And this is about the Florida Road Roundabout, I was visiting a friend who lives near there, who said a lot of people are going through, it's one way coming into town now. A lot of people are going the wrong way and ignoring the, the closed sign. Is there a way to, I, I mean, maybe it's going to be open soon and it won't be an issue, but is there some way to, monitor that or to put up lights or something?
So, I guess, so, I, I don't have the project, that's another project manager, but I'm, I know him, right, he's been in our office. So I can definitely talk to him about that, I don't know what stage he's doing right now, but I can definitely talk to him about that, that people might be going the wrong way and.
He must see it too, if he's, if he's there on the site, but I, I just, I was talking to a friend today and since you're here, I'd like to.
Yeah, so one of the things we can do is, that's one of the things we're going to do with on Church Street, we're going to notice that on the, on the next stage after this one. We're going to set up PBMS signs, those flashing signs that, that, that have messaging, that have messaging to England, so. Because on our next stage, if you can sort of picture east of George, you're going to, you're going to allow traffic into town, but not out. If you're coming from Gwolff, Northfield into town, you can come into town, but you won't be allowed to allow. So, so to.
You're not going to have two way on the bridge?
On the bridge, yes, east of George.
East of George.
You hold up that, 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 now again.
Okay, thank you.
So the bridge is just, just west or left of George, right? So what I'm saying is we're going to have east of George, just to right of George, we're going to have people coming into town, only into town. We're going to have temporary lights set up. But the way, one of the ways that we're going to hopefully prevent people going the wrong way is we're going to have a big, PBMS, that stays with portable variable messaging sign, is my signal, do not enter one way. So that's maybe one of the things that Jeff did project manager, that maybe they can, but I'll talk to him about that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council on these projects? Not seeing any, so thank you very much, I know it's kind of late, and I know it's coming up, might as well keep our public informed, would you appreciate it?
No, it's our pleasure, definitely.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, moving on in the agenda, I don't see any delegations or unfinished business, first moves us to the consent items. Before we, that's Morton approving and receiving the consent agenda for information, anyone on council? So I'm going to pause right now because I see people.
We have registered delegation, but can we speak to a matter that you had dealt with earlier with the Home Hardware then?
Can we address you during that? For the meeting.
Registered, we just have a question, I would like to ask to that.
We'll make that work, you'll be to come up and you say your name to the record, appreciate it.
My name is Don, can we, one, one of the residents behind there, behind your home hardware? If you want to call up the, I know you can still pull up the client. Some contractors have a copy of it. So on, on that seven, seven acres that are currently agricultural, how can you do a noise study on that when it's potentially going to be used as a truck shunting yard? How do we do a noise study for the potential noise on that seven acres, which is, currently agricultural, how can you do a noise study on that for potential shunting trucks? Right behind our house. And I know, I know our planner's not here at the moment, but.
There's something you want in, or that phrase that you want in?
Oh, sorry, I, I was going to just say, the, the point, the point of the public meeting is to gather feedback from residents. So any, any comments you make here, the planning staff will take them back. If there's any questions, the planning staff take, take them back and they'll answer them. So we may not have answers to your, your question tonight, but if you pose it on the record, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Are we allowed to see a, a copy of this, this noise study? Okay, I'm wondering where they take it from, they certainly weren't on our land to assess the noise coming over to our land currently from the existing operation.
So through you, Mr. Chair, so for the noise study, it will assess what the potential noise would be. So it's based on theoretical numbers that they determine, and they go up there to the site to figure out what those numbers would be. So there is a noise study that they are working on, it is available to the public as well as all those other studies that, were noted as part of the application, they're all available to the public and they are posted on our website. We can also get your information though, and we can get, you know, in command, we can see hard copies or whatever works for you as well.
I, I could talk to Nancy and look at the copies?
Yep, yep, we can look at hard copies as well.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. So before bathroom, Morton approving, receiving the consent agenda for information, same one on council with remove in the items for further descriptions. Giving you a moment. Not seeing any, then they ask for a motion, to approve the consent items. Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor Carol, follows in favor. Motion is carried. Moving on to seven point two, I have information, seven two one, creative adjustment inside. Staff reports on terminals. I don't see any addresses there, and to other business council reports or updates. I'll apply it, there's no notice of motion tonight.
Can I do outstanding activity now? Thanks. Um, I just wanted to bring up that I was talking to a constituent who was reminding me that taxation of older Dominican churches, has been sitting on our outstanding activities for quite some time. Um, we're, we're waiting, so, yeah. None of council was here when we dealt with this before, but it, it's got to do, and I'm not sure if I'm going to get all the details right, perhaps Ms. Priest could, speak to, sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I can speak to it, so we are currently working on our official plan update. Uh, we're hoping to have it done in the first half of next year of twenty twenty four, and then the taxation of Dominican churches will be part of that, that process to update our policies.
So I think, I think the issue was that they build their church on, on a donated land from a, a farm, and it, it's being able to sever that piece for the farm and have it with a lower tax rate. But fair description, yeah.
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, so yeah, that, that is the issue, that you're not allowed to sever agricultural properties for a smaller, uh, portion that would be able to be a farm portion. But in, in this situation, we're obviously dealing with existing churches on these properties that are agricultural, they're longstanding, and we just want to basically correct that situation so that they don't get taxed at the, their entire farm doesn't get taxed at the, at the rate of the church or the school, but rather they're separated out, so and that, the only way to do that is to separate them out through the policy framework and allow those agricultural services.
And my remembering rights, we can't take any interim measures, we have to get the proper, official plan done before we can.
Yes, so for you, Mr. Chair again, so this was planned to be done through the next phase of the Rock Review, the regional official plan review, but now with the changes that the provincial government is extending down to us, we are going to be doing through our official.
Okay, thank you, anything else I might could do with? And I think that brings up the number of open adjournments. Anyone to move adjournment, Counselor Carol, seconded by Counselor Verden, follows in favor. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for going to the panel tonight, virtually and in person. Counselor, can you take that to on Zoom until the live stream has talked? Good night, everyone.